Here we go. So, we will call to order the Emeryville Planning Commission meeting of October 26th. Charlie, can I have a roll call, please?
Certainly. Commissioner Cardoza.
Here.
Commissioner Flores.
Here.
Commissioner Jermaine.
Here.
Commissioner Hoff.
Here.
Vice Chair Donaldson.
Here.
Chair Martin.
Here.
Six Commissioners are present, and Commissioner Jeffrey has an excused absence this evening.
Thanks, Charlie. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two, citizens to be heard. Is there anyone at tonight's meeting wishing to speak on an item not agendized? Seeing no one, we will go to action recaps. We actually have several. One is, the first is a special joint meeting with the City Council on September 14th.
Yes, that's a typo on the agenda. It should say the 14th, not the 19th. And I would note that this action recap was miscolated in your packets. It is in there, but it was put behind the staff report for the study session on parking policy. So hopefully you found it and have had a chance to review it.
That's why that's so thick.
Right.
Okay, well, let's go on to, while people dig that up, let's go on to the special meeting of September 25th. Were there any comments on that action recap? Do I have a motion?
With approval.
A second?
Second.
So, without objection, we'll approve the minutes of September 25th.
Commissioner Jermaine.
Motion by Jermaine and second by Cardoza. And then we have the action recap from our regular meeting on September 28th. Were there any comments on that? Seeing no one, do I have a motion?
With approval.
And a second?
Second.
So, we have a motion by Jermaine and a second by Donaldson, without objection. And then back to the special joint meeting with the City Council on September 14th. Did everyone find their action recaps? Do people want to take a minute to review it? Were there any comments or questions on the contents? Why don't we take a minute to look at it? Any comments? Seeing no, or revisions? No? Do I have a motion? Okay.
Second.
So, we have a motion by Jermaine and a second by Flores, without objection. We'll approve those action minutes. Next item on the agenda is Director's Report.
Okay, I have a number of things to tell you about. First, I want to remind everybody that tomorrow evening is the party for outgoing City Manager John Flores. That will be tomorrow, Friday, October 27th, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m., right here in City Hall. The sign-in and reception desk will be at our front counter down in the City Administration Building, next door, the planning and building counter. And then from there, the party will kind of spread out to wherever it spreads out to, front and back of the building. So, I hope you'll all be able to come. I think it'll be a real fun time and a time to honor someone who's just done an incredible job for this city. City Council has actually had three meetings since you last met. On October 3rd, at their regular meeting, they did, they covered a number of items. They had a study session on the Gilman Street Playfields, which, as you may know, is a joint powers agency cooperation thing between, I think it's Berkeley, Albany, El Cerrito and Richmond, and Emeryville, on some playfields that will be up at Gilman Street on the shoreline, near Golden Gate Fields, that will all have, all cities will have the rights to use. The Council also approved a contract with Farron Peers and Kimley Horn to do a cumulative traffic analysis of the big four projects in the Powell and Christie area. They passed the Sidewalk Cafe ordinance, and then the four ordinances that you held, that you considered at a special meeting on September 25th, they passed the preservation ordinance, the condominium conversion ordinance, and the ordinance that dropped the height limit from 55 to 40 feet between Hollis and Doyle Streets. So, all four of those ordinances, the Sidewalk Cafe ordinance, the preservation ordinance, the condo conversion ordinance, and the height limit ordinance, will take effect on November 2nd, 30 days after their passage on October 3rd. On the RM Medium Density Residential Downzoning Ordinance, they did not pass that on October 3rd. They made some further revisions to it and reintroduced it. What they did was to add a conditionally permitted density of up to 35 units per acre, and a provision that the floor area ratio may be increased by up to 50% with a conditional use permit. So, they had another second reading of the ordinance on October 3rd, and then passed it on October 17th, which would take effect November 16th. However, they also passed an identical ordinance on October 17th as an urgency measure. So, the ordinance took effect on October 17th and is in effect today. They approved a modified noise waiver for work on the breakwater out at the Marina. They had previously approved that noise waiver, and they made some changes to it. They had a second reading of the smoking ordinance and decided not to pass it. It was, it will be further studied and refined and brought back in the future for another introduction. And they discussed some modifications to the urban forestry ordinance to make the City Council the ultimate appeal body on decisions pertaining to street trees, and that ordinance was introduced on October 17th.
It wasn't introduced.
Oh, it wasn't? Oh, I'm sorry, I misspoke.
Next agenda.
Oh, I thought it was. Okay. I stand corrected, it was not introduced on the 17th. At their meeting on October 17th, in addition to the RM ordinance that I already mentioned, they held study sessions on the couple of projects that you had study sessions on at your last meeting, the MacArthur-San Pablo Mixed-Use Project and the 39th and Adeline Residential Project. Both of those projects, as you may recall, under the preservation ordinance, involve the demolition of significant structures and therefore will ultimately require City Council approval, so we wanted the Council to have a chance to look at them and give some comments back to the applicant before those projects move forward. I would say that their comments in general were consistent with what the Planning Commission had to say about those projects, although somewhat in some additional comments and details. The redevelopment agency had an update on the Flatiron Project, that's where Jug Liquor used to be, at Adeline and San Pablo. The redevelopment agency also approved a contract with Spark Parking to do a monitoring program of parking in the North Hollis area, so we'll get some data on what parking patterns are like in that area. And they approved the affordability agreement with Pulte Homes for the Glass House Project. In addition, some of you, I think, were at the all-day session last Saturday, October 21st, when the City Council met and had a special meeting on the capital improvement program. They went through line by line, all the various projects, and discussed them all and made some decisions about what to fund and what not to fund, and what to defer to the future and so forth. The CIP will be coming to the Planning Commission for review, for conformity to the general plan, probably at your next meeting on December 14th, and then it will be going back to the City Council for adoption. The general plan update meeting, the most recent meeting, was two days ago, on Tuesday. They had a pretty short meeting because they've been working pretty hard the last couple of months on the alternatives analysis, and so they discussed the upcoming public workshop. That workshop, which everyone is encouraged to attend, will be on Saturday, November 18th, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:30 at the Linen Life Gallery down the street on Park Avenue. All of the various alternatives for the future of the city that the General Plan Steering Committee has developed will be presented and discussed, and hopefully we'll get some direction from the community as to what they would like the future of Emeryville to be.
From 10 to 12:30?
10 to 12:30, Saturday, November 18th. We will be sending a newsletter to every resident and business in the city, as we did before the first workshop. We're also sending out a postcard to remind people to save the date. We'll be putting posters up around the city, of course, announcing it on our website, and announcing it at every opportunity we have, such as right now. This is, I'm beginning to sound like a broken record here, but I just want to announce that we have once again won an award for our stormwater guidelines for green dense redevelopment. This one was from the state, the California chapter of the American Planning Association that has just held their conference, actually earlier this week, in Orange County. And Diana was there to represent us, and she brought the award back. So, here it is. If you want to, maybe you could pass it around, the Commissioner can have a look at it. And we have now been, I think, we have been nominated for a national award. Is that right?
That happens next.
Which will be, if we get it, will be presented at the National APA Conference in Philadelphia next year. We have an item that's actually listed on the agenda, and I, then after that, I have one more item that I will turn over to Diana, but before I do that, let's go to the one that's on the agenda, unless any of you have any questions on anything I've reported on so far.
Questions? Nope.
Good work, Diana. Thank you.
You have in your packet the proposed meeting calendar for 2007, for your review and approval. The meeting dates are set by the roster that the City Council adopts, which is the fourth Thursday of every month, except November and December, when the meetings are combined into a single meeting on the second Thursday of December. Those dates are reflected on this chart, they're in the far right-hand column of the chart. All of the other dates on this chart are the various dates that flow from those meetings, the submittal deadline for applications, when we have our staff meetings, when we have our internal development coordinating committee review, when the agendas get published, when the staff reports get drafted, when the packet gets delivered, and so forth. Those dates have been adjusted as necessary to work around city holidays. We also take into account religious observances. In this case, we found that, as the meeting dates themselves for the Planning Commission, there's no conflicts with any city holidays or religious observances. There are a few conflicts with some of the other dates with city holidays, and we've adjusted them accordingly. So, we would recommend that you approve this calendar.
Any concerns over the schedule? Do we actually have to vote?
And just nod your heads.
Nope, that looks good to us.
Okay, thank you. Finally, you may recall at your last meeting, Diana presented a status report on our implementation of the housing element, and you had a few questions. She has prepared a memo responding to your questions that is in your packet, and that she'll talk about now for a minute.
Thanks, Diana.
I'll just summarize the memo. It addresses projected housing production and green building guidelines and homebuyer assistance. The staff report estimate of housing production through 2008 has been updated. It looks as if the city could meet 120% of the moderate income goal, 83% of the low-income goal, and 78% of the very-low income goal. Because it's so hard to meet those two, low and very-low income goal, the Council will be holding a study session about the idea of changing the set-aside requirement from 20% moderate to 5% of each. But unless it's subsidized, a requirement like that could be really hard for developers to meet, so that'll be an interesting discussion. Staff is now asking applicants to show what green building guidelines they follow in planning approval applications. And the city offers homebuyer assistance to Emeryville teachers with moderate household incomes and to employees, city employees, regardless of income. Two city employees have taken advantage of the program. Some teachers have applied, but some didn't meet the household income requirements, and others were too far down on the lottery list. So, it is helping some Emeryville employees. So, those are the answers that I could come up with to the questions you asked. Any questions?
No. Thanks for the report back.
I have a.
Go ahead, Art.
I have a question. Is my understanding correct that if someone builds over 30 units, they're required to provide moderate housing?
Yes.
Is it 20% of the total?
20%.
But it could be moderate, low, or very low?
Mm-hmm. They will generally do moderate unless the city negotiates a subsidy from the redevelopment agency housing fund for deeper.
That's my question, why would anybody do low if they could do moderate?
Right.
That's why our low production is so low, because nobody volunteers.
Right.
So, how do you get, how do you get, stimulate the low-income part of the equation?
You have to subsidize it.
We do it through a subsidy.
That's what's been happening, and it hasn't been enough. But the redevelopment agency has a housing fund that comes from the redevelopment tax increment. It's a percentage of the housing, of the tax increment, and they do use that fund to negotiate deeper affordability for some units in some projects.
And what about below 30 units?
Below 30 units, there's no affordability requirements.
But can we insist upon it if we subsidize it, or not?
Well, if we're subsidizing the project anyway, if it's a redevelopment agency project, we can put requirements on it.
And if you use low-mod funds from the redevelopment agency, then you have to put affordability restrictions on the project.
You have to use what?
If you use low and moderate money, so 20% of tax increment money, it has to go into your low-mod fund for, to create low, moderate housing. And so, if you use those 20% monies for a project, then you have to get, you have to get, you have to buy down, oh, you don't have to buy it down, but you get the restriction, the affordability restrictions.
Does this apply to condominium sale housing as well as rentals?
Yes, to both.
Because I noticed on the sheet here, Bay Street condos, they had 95 units, but they had no moderate income requirements at all. Why was that?
Because Bay Street has two projects. A lot of times to fund the affordable housing, you have to separate it. So, the Bay Street Center has a condo section and a rental section, and the affordable units, there are a lot of units in the rental section that are affordable.
But the total of the two projects is less than 20%?
Right.
Shouldn't be.
Well, it could be. The, first of all, the Bay Street project is a redevelopment agency project, so it was the agency determined what the affordability range would be, but the negotiation that occurs with the applicant can't, the baseline is 20% of the units have to be moderate income. But then, starting from that baseline, we can negotiate with them something different. And one of the things we might negotiate is fewer units, but deeper affordability.
I see.
So, there's some flexibility there. Whatever it may be, the affordability agreement is ultimately approved by the City Council and becomes like a contract between the.
Oh, that's why in the case of Bay Street rentals, they have all 57 are low-income.
Yes, right.
So, that was in exchange for a lower amount.
That's right.
I, thank you.
And in fact, in my Director's Report, I mentioned that the affordability agreement with Pulte on the Glass House Project was approved. I didn't go into the whole history of that, but that had been brought to the Council previously. Council had some questions about it, didn't like the deal that staff had struck with Pulte, and directed staff to go back and renegotiate it, more to Council's liking, which the staff did, and then brought back a modified affordability agreement, which the Council then approved.
I think the suggestion of five, five and five, to me, makes a lot of sense.
Well, that will, that will be discussed further in the future.
What we have now, I think that's an improvement.
There are other ways to get a low to moderate income in, and there's state funding and federal funding, and you've got HUD, and there's great tax incentives for people that want to invest in that way, for affordable housing. So, it's not all, it's not all city-funded, and the city, I'm sure, doesn't have that much money, and it's, it's actually doing pretty good by all the standards that you compare it to.
Yeah, it's doing better than any other city in the state.
The Bay Street rentals, affordable rentals are funded by low-income housing tax credits from the state, for instance.
From the state?
Mm-hmm.
No, they're federal, aren't they?
Well, they're distributed through the state.
Well, I would hope that we'd continue to do whatever we can to keep the diversity in the city and to create as many very-low and low-income units as we can. I think the most telling statistic is that we've, we've met 126% of moderate, 83 of low-income, 78 of very-low income, and 723% of the projections for market rate units. So, the diversity is dwindling in our town, and I think we should make our best efforts to try to beef it up.
So, the Council and Agency are going to have a discussion on possibly adjusting this, the ratios. Do you have any idea when that item would go before the?
Is that November 7th?
Council and Agency, for those Commissioners interested in attending.
I'm not sure. I think it might be at the next meeting, November 7th.
I don't think it is.
No?
But I'm not certain. I think it might be the 21st.
We have study sessions on the 21st and something else.
Pay attention to the agenda.
Yeah, sorry, just don't know.
Is that it for?
That is it for Director's Reports, yes.
Thank you, Diana. Then we'll open the public hearing items. We have two public hearings tonight. The first one is on Emeryville Tyco time extension at 145564 Street.
Yes.
This is Diana's?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Emeryville Tyco is requesting a one-year extension to the use permit and parking variants for the building that was granted, and the building is at 142462th Street. Emeryville Tyco owner Susan Horn has made a good-faith effort to start construction. In March, she did a sound test, and the neighbors all certified they were not bothered by the sound, and a building permit was gotten ready to issue. In June, she received a line of credit from Wells Fargo, and on October 24th, she signed a contract with Struck Tech Group to do the construction. The extension is in the city's interest, because this is a cultural arts organization. There have not been any substantial changes to the project or to the conditions surrounding it, so staff recommends approval of this one-year time extension. Ms. Horn was unable to attend the meeting. Is there anyone else here representing Tyco? Yes. So, this is John Corzan, and he has been assisting with the construction process, and if you have any questions, you can ask him.
Any questions of staff? What we'll do is open the public hearing. Commenters have up to three minutes to comment, and then we'll close the public hearing and deliberate. Would the applicant like to speak? Are there any questions of the applicant?
When do they expect to finish?
Why don't you come up to the microphone, introduce yourself? The question was, when do you expect to finish?
With the extension, when do you expect to be done?
Well, as Diana said, we are, we just signed a contract with Struck Tech, and it's my understanding that they're hoping to start with, start construction within the next couple of weeks, and in, I haven't gotten a schedule from him, but I believe that all of the interior work, which is going to be the ADA work that we need to do, and the retrofitting, is going to be done immediately, and then he's, there's a new roof that's going to be put on, and that's going to be postponed until, probably until spring, so that you can get through the winter and not have to deal with inclement weather. So, hopefully, in the spring, we'll be back up and underway.
Any other questions? Do you have an alternative, are you still operating at the original location, or you just don't have an?
She's just not operating.
Okay.
Well, just not operating classes. They're doing performances and that sort of thing, but there's no classes right now.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? This is your opportunity. Seeing no one else, we will close the public hearing. Any comments or questions? Commissioner, do I have a motion?
I so moved.
Second.
Motion by Cardoza and second by Donaldson. We have the roll.
On the motion, Commissioner Cardoza.
Aye.
Commissioner Flores.
Aye.
Commissioner Jermaine.
Aye.
Commissioner Hoff.
Aye.
Vice Chair Donaldson.
Aye.
Chair Martin.
Aye.
Six ayes, the extension request is approved. And I should note, this decision's appealable to the City Council within 15 days.
Thank you, Charlie. Congratulations.
Good luck.
Tell her we're waiting. Next item on the agenda is the application at 126064th Street. I have to recuse myself because I live within 500 feet of this application, so Vice Chair Donaldson will take over the hearing.
Okay. Staff report.
This is a use permit and a design review application for the new construction of a two-building duplex located in the medium-density residential zone. The project location site is 64th Street, here, and a currently vacant lot bounded between Filejo Street, Filejo, Doyle, 64th and 65th. The newly-created parcel that you are probably familiar with is 3,114 square feet. The applicant is proposing a two-separate structure duplex. The front building would front on 64th Street, and it would be 1,042 square feet of living space, with the ground floor housing 821 square feet of parking, enough for three cars, which is meeting the requirement of the two units. The rear building is proposed to be 1,117 square feet, and the total living, the total square footage of, for the project would be 2,980 square feet. This is the color rendering of the front of the building that's proposed. As you can see, it will have, it's proposed to feature a staggered roof line, therefore creating a more pleasant street presence on 64th Street, which is a mixed neighborhood, duplexes, small apartment buildings, and single-family homes. This front roof height will be 26 feet 8 inches, and the rear roof will be a little bit higher than that, at 28 feet 8 inches. So, the height is within the 30-foot height limit for the district. The width of the front structure will be 21 feet 6 inches, and the rear width, the unit, the rear width, the rear unit width, excuse me, will be 23 feet 6 inches. The units are both proposed to be. The units are both proposed to be three stories, with the top story on both of them, actually, let me get this, serving as kind of a loft area. As you are aware, the recent downzoning of our district changed the density requirements and applied the floor area ratio to residential development. So, the applicant was aware of this and was one of the two applications that were granted exemptions from this new ordinance. However, this project does fall within the new guidelines, coming in at .69, an FAR of .69, and 28 units per acre. With the conditional use permit under the new guidelines, the FAR can be increased to .75, so they're under that at .69. And also, you would need the, with the conditional use permit, you could go up to 35 units per acre, and this one comes in at 28 units per acre, so it, it does fall within the new guidelines, even that it was exempted from them. The setbacks of the proposal, the front setbacks will be 10 feet, the rear yard comes in at 15 feet, and the side setbacks are both 3 feet. Along this, the western property border, for an easier path of travel, the applicant, since he owns the lot next door, will be granting an easement. This unit will have its entrance back here, so this will allow them to have a little bit more than 3 feet to travel through there, if someone wants to bring a bicycle or a couch to move in. The parking is located here on the first level, underneath the front structure. There's parking provided for three cars, and the applicant has shown a detail of this. This kind of looks like it's for four, but this car is assumed to be going to park here, because there was some concern about fitting in with the two-car garage, but they've measured it out, and it seems to work. I also have, I don't know if it's going to work very well here, but this is a materials board, perhaps I could just pass this, if that's okay?
Sure.
Showing the colors to be used and the materials that are proposed to be used. Also, in accordance with more of our green building guidelines, we have requested the applicant, and they complied, to make the driveway not just concrete, so that's not what you see on the street, and they are proposing to use these permeable pavers, which you should have a copy of the spec sheet in your packet, which would provide for more greenery in the front. It looks like this. Also, you should have, I put a late addition for a condition of approval on the dais there for the palm trees. Currently on the vacant lot, there's a very nice, mature palm tree that is, since the size of the lot, if you're developing it at all, it would have to get moved, and the applicant is trying to locate a place that will take the tree, so it can be relocated and preserved, so this is an additional condition of approval that will be added in as well. Also, you should have received on the dais a letter from one of the neighbors that we received yesterday, and the applicant will speak to some of the concerns when he makes his presentation in a moment. Additionally, staff feels that this is a good design, and that it, it is in harmony with the rest of the street. Great care was taken to sort of echo some of the features on the neighboring buildings to make it fit in and, and look harmonious with the neighborhood. People in the neighborhood have probably gotten used to having a vacant lot there, so they wanted to make it nice and not look, you know, really big. So, if anyone has any questions?
Susan, you want to mention the changed elevation drawing as well?
Yes, I'm sorry, that's right. This, the floor plan of the third level of the rear unit doesn't match the elevations that you also have received, but this does. It just changed a little bit. The interior of the upstairs was rearranged a little for orientation of the windows and the bathrooms to be slightly different, so what's in your, this sheet that's in your packet is not right. This, this is the new elevation, with slight changes, and I'm sorry, I'm not more familiar with what they are, but the applicant will address that when he makes his presentation.
I'd also like to just note one thing, I think, sorry I didn't catch this before, but I think this condition about the palm tree, rather than being listed under ongoing conditions, should be incorporated into the condition about the landscape plan, which would be 5A, 2A.
Okay.
Priority issuance of a building permit.
Okay.
So we can just add a sentence at the end of that condition.
Are there any questions of staff?
Is it your opinion that they could actually use these, this garage, and get to this second car with only an eight-foot driveway in effect?
It's more than eight feet.
Yeah, it's 16 feet.
No, but if there's a car parked, there's only eight feet left for maneuvering in and out.
That, that should be enough, you know, I mean, a standard parking space is eight to eight and a half feet wide. We did feel that it was tight to have another car parked behind that third car. It would have been difficult to maneuver that car in and get it straight, but we think there's enough maneuvering room there to get around the other car and into the back of the garage.
We, we did direct the applicant to play with this as much as possible and show, you know, how this would be possible, and also to alleviate any concerns that folks might have that they won't actually use this for parking. It's in the conditions of approval that the garage is only for parking and not to be used for storage.
All right, okay.
And I might note also that the garage is 40 feet long, so a standard parking space is 18 feet long. There is, but most cars aren't that long, so there is enough room there where there's two cars, one behind the other, to kind of pull them up a little bit farther, probably.
Any other questions of staff?
Thank you.
Will you open the public hearing? Does the applicant want to make a presentation?
Hi, I'm Michael Maroney. Most of you know me already. Let's see, well, I just wanted to say I'm sorry about, about the last-minute elevation changes, but I, you know, I've been kind of frantically trying to answer all the concerns about the, the changes and whatnot, so, anyway, that's why we're, we're here today of the hearing with some last-minute elevation changes. I need to talk more about the design, other than what she already said. I do want to respond to the letter a little bit. Okay. I want to just respond to the letter a little bit. Where's this one? Of course, I just received the letter myself this morning, so I actually went out and put up some little makeshift story poles, just to see how things would line up, and I wonder if I can just stick them on here, or, yeah, it's probably easier if I stick them on here. I don't know how well you can see that, but this part here, and that is only 13 feet 7 inches tall, but it's tacked to the fence, so it actually, the actual height of the, of the eve there is almost exactly the same as the height of her window, so that would be the front corner of the house. And anyway, so, of course, it does, will block some of her light, and, but also, you know, the pitch of the roof is such that she'll get quite a bit of afternoon sunshine there, and it's, in the wintertime, she'll actually get some from the front as well. So, just wanted to show you that, I can pass these around when I'm done, too. So this is actually the rear unit, and what it shows you here is the space between the houses. So, the lower part in the back, there's three units, there's one, the front one belongs to a woman named Lynn, the one that's closest to my property in the back is Monica's, and the one in the back, I don't, I don't remember her name. But anyway, so this would be, if you see the two little story poles, one kind on either side there, obviously, they're not as tall as, but I just wanted to show the location of the house, so they're actually, her living room window will get blocked, oh, wait a second, I'm sorry, that's the wrong picture.
Is this due east?
Excuse me?
Was that due east?
Yeah. It's the same picture. This one, okay. Sorry, just did this this afternoon, but, so this is actually the space between the houses, so the, the story pole all the way over here would be the back of the front unit, so that the deck would be projecting out from there. So in fact, you know, her concern about the deck, in fact, she won't even be able to see the deck, the woman who wrote the letter. This is actually adjacent to the back unit, unit, I don't know if it's B or C, but, so the, the deck really has little bearing on the front unit. So, we could look at the elevations, too, if you want to, but, anyway, so, so the story pole on the right would be the back of the front unit, and the story pole on the, at the very left side of the picture would be the front of the back unit. And so, in fact, you can't see it here, because the tree's blocking it, but her, I guess her dining room window's right behind that tree, so fortunately, actually works out that at least two of her windows are not blocked at all, and then, of course, her living room window will be blocked, unfortunately, but, anyway, so it actually, you know, works out not, not too bad. So, this one other picture is looking kind of towards the front unit, and you can, you can see the story poles a little, that there's one, that's the front of the front unit, and this would be the back of the front unit, and so this area in, in here, sorry, in there, would be the back, the yard, the backyard of the front unit, so, and that's kind of already blocked by that tree, so it actually isn't going to make a whole lot of difference in terms of light and shadow, but, anyway, anyway, I don't want to take up too much of your time, I just wanted to tell you generally what I sort of discovered today. Other than that, you know, I think anybody that built a house there is going to want to take, maximize the space and going to block some light and a little bit of privacy, so, so that's really, all I really need to say to you, so, you have any questions for me, or?
These poles, when did you put the poles up?
Today.
Today.
So I just saw the letter this morning, so I just wanted to go out there and actually get a sense of where, where things would be, so.
The property to the east of you has two houses on it?
Three. Three, yeah.
It was built by the redevelopment agency and sold as affordable housing.
It has three houses?
It has, it has three condominiums.
Is there a rear house? Is there a rear house on that lot?
There's two rear houses on that lot.
Yeah, the two in the rear, I think, are attached.
I went out there this afternoon and looked at it, and I, I don't think the complaint has any validity. The buildings adjacent, existing buildings there are going to cast a shadow on this property in the morning, and this property is going to cast a shadow on that in the afternoon, and that's kind of life.
Let's, are there any other questions for the applicant?
Had you had conversations with anybody on the east property before?
I haven't, I actually have been trying to contact the woman Monica, because I'd had a conversation with her about, I don't know if you guys remember, the dog leg, little projection of my property into their backyard, because I told them if they didn't object to my subdivision, I would pass that on to them, but she hasn't responded to my email, so I did try and communicate with them, but they haven't responded.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, is there any?
Oh, let me, let me pass these around.
Here's your sample board, Mr. Maroney.
So is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this item?
Jim Martin, 64th Street, speaking as a neighbor and resident. I guess for me, it's a larger issue when we have these infill projects, where it's really important to look at the detail and understand the detail. You were given a lot of information today by photograph of what, something that happened today. It would have been nice to have that information for even the neighbors to understand that, to allay their concerns, but I think it is really important, not just whether there's a wall and shadow, it's important to know whether you've got a window that's, an existing bathroom window that's going to be looking into a bedroom, or vice versa, when you've got six feet between the two wall spaces, and I'm not, I didn't see any information today that demonstrated clearly that you weren't going to have a deck looking into a bedroom window or into a bathroom window, and when you're in this type of neighborhood, it's important to know those things, and to have them clearly showed, shown on the plan. I think it would have been useful on this plan to show the footprint of the adjacent properties. You can do that by aerial without a survey. It's nice to have some context and reference, and I hope that the commission and staff insist on that in, in the future, when we're looking at these infill projects. I think the comment about, I read through Lynn's letter as well, I think her comment about the deck on the back of the front unit is a good one. They've got a yard area, what is the purpose of a deck, when they could have a stairway that goes down into the yard, and they could enjoy their backyard, just like the neighbor next door, whether their yard is here or here, they could enjoy their yard area on the ground floor, where you've got a fence that separates that use. I'm, I'm a little perplexed about the deck, because if you look at the footprint, or the floor plans, you've got two bedrooms on the back of the building, the common space is at the front of the building. The deck would be attached to the two bedrooms on the second floor, going off the edge here, so it's not as though it would contribute to a common use there. It's to provide access. I frankly don't think that you should have, in this type of neighborhood, a deck on the second floor that's going to raise issues. He had the story poles, and you could see where the deck was going to sit, and it was clearly looking into, I'm not sure whether it was accurate, but it was clearly looking into a window, three feet across. I guess my point is, it would be nice to have context shown on these plans when we're looking at these infill projects. I'm glad to see that he's adjusted height and, and the mass, and it seems like the design fits in well with the neighborhood, but I think we need to go one step further and understand this interrelationship between privacy and, and not just shadow and wall, but whether we're going to have neighbors in conflict with one another. Thanks.
Is there anyone else from the public wishing to speak on this item?
I would like to just respond for a second to what he said. I mean, I, if you guys are interested, I'd be happy to discuss all the windows and how they intersect with the other house, but I won't waste your time if you're not. In terms of the deck, you know, there's somewhat, something of a valid point that, you know, whether or not it's better to have deck or backyard. I'm not actually real attached to the deck, if you guys had a strong feeling about that. I am, I do agree that the access to the backyard is very important, because otherwise you'd have to go out the front door and down the side, so I think, because there is no internal stairway to the, to the garage, so. So I think, because there is no internal stairway to the, to the garage, so, and it would be difficult to squeeze a stairway into this plan. So, so in other words, at least having a stairway is, is important. I did look at where the deck would be. Yeah.
Is this adjacent to unit B?
It's Monica's unit, the back unit on, it's actually, in some ways, it's not a very good picture, because we took the angle to try and get the two story poles, so you can't see the, the window that's, there's a window behind those trees, and the deck can look down in there. I believe that's her dining room, but I, I'm not sure. So, but, and then there's a room upstairs, which is a bedroom, but since mine's going to be a little bit lower, it seems like you might be able to look in, but it'd be kind of at your eye level. The window sill might be kind of at your head level. So I mean, I'd certainly be happy to screen it if that was preferable, but I would think that, you know, she might be preferring the light rather than the screening. But anyway, I'm, I'm flexible about the deck.
I wanted to ask you about the deck. At first, I thought the deck was an extension of their living area, and that would make a lot of sense, rather than going downstairs, but it looks like it's an extension of their bedrooms.
Yeah.
So how do you get from the deck to the rest of the house?
Through the bedroom.
Through, through a bedroom?
Yeah.
Oh, and there's, there's no hallway that bypasses the bedroom?
Oh, no, yeah, you'd have to go.
The deck is not part of the living area, it's part of the bedrooms.
Yeah, in essence, it would be off the bedroom.
Well, I'd be in favor of, okay. In that, in that sense, I, it seems to me that the deck does not enhance the live, the living area of the house, and it is a detriment to the neighbors.
But it's not, because it, nothing, it doesn't look into the neighbor's yard.
Well, it doesn't.
No.
That's not, that's not true.
I mean, it's been misrepresented here.
Pardon?
It's been misrepresented. I walked the property today and looked at it.
It does not look into their.
No.
Let's, let's wind up the public hearing part, and then we'll discuss the items. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this? Okay, seeing no one else, I'll close the public hearing. Okay.
Actually, if you look at the plan, they could take all the windows off that side of both units, and it would still work just fine. But we're setting a precedent here that's never happened before. Setbacks in the city are three feet on each side of the lot line. Now we're coming up with a new idea that you can't have windows, if it might look possibly into adjacent units' windows? That's kind of revolutionary.
I'm not suggesting that.
Talking about the deck.
I mean, the staff would have to go through all the plans that are submitted in the future in enormous detail, just to establish that.
No, no, but when you're asking for a conditional use permit, it, it might be nice to do something that you're not required to do. That would not be unusual to ask them of that, because he's, by right, he can't build these, these units.
Well, if they're gonna, if they're going to make these claims, I think they have to document them, and they haven't done it. They haven't even been willing to talk to the, to the applicant about it.
I, I think the burden is on the applicant to show the relationship of what he's proposing to the existing structures. I don't think it's the burden of the neighbors to come.
But they've never, they've just brought this up. It's, it's not something that anybody would even think of before, and.
They haven't seen a plan before. When did they see the plan? I think that, I think that we need to have, for an infill project like this, I do appreciate the amount of effort that you've made to articulate the structure, to change the roof line, to fall within the guidelines that we've set. But I think that the purpose of our design review in this infill setting is to make sure that the structure works in the neighborhood with the adjacent buildings and with the existing structures. And I personally don't feel comfortable approving something where I don't see on paper what the relationship between those buildings is, especially when there are neighbors who have expressed concern about that, so.
My turn?
Oh, yeah.
How, how long has this plan been, or how much has this plan been shared outside of the commission? Have you had a chance, Mr. Maroni, to share this with any neighbor? I mean, I, I just, I look at this, and I, I kind of, I kind of have to agree with Buzz. I mean, they're, they're following the guidelines as set forth, you know, the setbacks, the windows, and, and I feel like you should have every right to put a deck, although I, I tend to agree, it should be off the living area, not off the master bedroom or the bedrooms, but still, that seems to be, you're right. We're talking about, it seems to me, one window on the neighboring property that's affected.
But it's not even at the same level.
And it's a dining room, as far as, as far as I'm told. Otherwise, the design looks right. I mean, there's things I could say, like widening the staircase and putting the door on where that window is. Actually, the window treatments could be nicer, but, you know, I still feel like this is all within the scope of what that neighborhood would like to see on, on a property like this, with the exception of one neighbor. But it seems like Mr. Maroni is not attached to the deck, and it seems that the deck right now is really, looking at the poles, I was at the property today and walked the property as well, I don't see, I saw the poles, I don't see any reason why those two buildings wouldn't, would be overlooking into anybody's yard or causing any problems. The deck might, agreed that the deck might, so delete the deck, and I don't see any problem with this at all.
My feeling, go ahead, Paul. My feeling is that it, it would be almost impossible to design a house having as a given somebody else's windows. I, I think, I think he has to do the best job he can. On the other hand, and I would be inclined to approve this project without the deck. I think the deck is overdoing it. It apparently is not essential for your living area. So, so I, I like the project, and I would, I would go along with it if we could eliminate the deck.
I would agree with that. There is a little bit of a problem with how you get.
I don't know, can we legally do that?
Sure.
How you get out of that second bedroom number two onto the stairway, as it shows there, it's a sliding door, and there isn't enough space for a landing, and the full run of the stairs to get down to the grave.
Is that a required second means of egress, that he has to have a stair there?
No, it's not.
Charlie, is that any?
I don't believe so. Did you check with Diane? It's not required.
But there's, you know, no way to use the yard if you don't have that.
Well, putting a staircase out there, I don't think that's a problem.
I suppose you could put a spiral stairway down there or something.
I, I just wanted to make one comment. I did show our plans examiner, these plans, and since it's under 3,000 square feet per unit, you do not need a rear exit.
He does need a rear exit.
Doesn't.
Does not.
Does not.
And it doesn't need two means of egress from the third floor?
No, it does not. The third floor, the floor area doesn't constitute enough space to require that.
Could I ask the applicant if they're married to the idea of a stairwell at that back bedroom?
You need to come to the microphone, please.
I think the stairwell's really important for that front unit, because otherwise, you know, you're going to have to go out and around to get to the backyard, so it's really going to sort of separate that space. I, I agree with the, you know, the ambivalence about the deck. I mean, I thought it was, but, and we could switch to a swing door and just have a landing and a stairwell.
Okay, thank you.
Down, down to a deck at, at the yard level.
Okay, in the spirit of compromise, I would like to, to make a motion that we approve it without the deck and with a stairway that meets the satisfaction of the planning director. And I move approval on that, on that bed.
I'll second that.
And does your motion include our amendment to the conditions about the palm tree?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is that a usual condition that you make?
What?
Relocating trees, or is this kind of unique, or?
Well, we, well, it's, it, I don't know that we've ever had a condition before about relocating a palm tree, because this is a kind of a unique situation, but it's not an unusual kind of a condition.
But it's a good faith effort, so.
Good faith effort.
An arborist could say, there's no good use for that tree anywhere, let it go away, and that could be a good fit.
Exactly. That's right.
Are there people that will pay a lot for a mature palm tree?
Yeah, I'm just saying, it could go either way.
It's not very tall, it's, it's kind of short, wide.
And there are actually companies that specialize in relocating palm trees.
It hurts.
I'm sorry, the second was by Commissioner Hoff. Are you ready for a vote?
Roll call on that.
Okay, on the motion to approve it without the deck, but with a stairway to the rear yard, and with the additional condition on the palm tree. Commissioner Cardoza?
Aye.
Commissioner Flores?
Aye.
Commissioner Jermaine?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoff?
Aye.
Vice Chair Donaldson?
I'm going to vote no, just because I really feel strongly that we need to have more contextual information when we're dealing with these single-family neighborhoods in order to make a decision. I appreciate that you did the story polls today, but it would have been, I wasn't able to get by today, and the story polls weren't up earlier, and I don't have firsthand experience to take a look at these things. So, you know, I would rather have seen it come back with more complete information.
All right, four ayes, one no. The application is approved. This decision may be appealed to the city council within 15 days.
So I'm back, and we are on study session item, and we're going to discuss parking policy and the RFP that's being considered. And is that, Diana, is that you, or is that Charlie?
Yes, that's me. So this is a request for proposals that staff prepared in response to comments made at the joint meeting on parking on September 14th. And we're here tonight to make sure that you feel we've responded to the things you said, and that this RFP is what you had in mind. The request is for our firm to complete four tasks. The first task is to prepare a zoning ordinance amendment. The amendment would allow the parking requirement to be reduced for projects that institute programs such as car sharing, car pools, and transit passes. Set a larger compact space size and a unistall size. Develop a policy for applying new standards to existing development. Set new aisle widths and other dimensional standards. Explicitly allow lifts. And allow parking waivers for certain uses under a certain size near transit. The second task is to coordinate with the Sparks Parking people in analyzing data they collect around Glass House. The third is to help set up parking meters. And the fourth is to help reevaluate the residential parking program. So if, I was going to say staff recommends that, you recommend city council approval of this request for proposals, but we really want to hear what you, how you respond to it.
And we also want to make sure that we've accurately captured your direction from the joint meeting.
Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item before we go to commission discussion? Seeing no one, comments or questions from commissioners?
I think we talked a little bit about diagonal parking and trying to figure out if you, in certain instances, diagonal parking worked better. And I didn't, I didn't see that in here, but is that, is that pointed out here somewhere?
We could add that, just to make sure they address it.
Yeah, I had an architect look at a parking lot for us recently, where we actually ended up getting better, a better fit for diagonal, and the width of the aisle was able to be taken down because of it, so.
So they'll be looking at, we had this in mind, but it's good to make sure we cover everything. So they'll be looking at parking space shapes and sizes, and aisle shapes and sizes, and how all that fits together. And I don't think we've said that very well, so that's a good comment.
Great.
When, when do you anticipate the Glass House garage will be open for business?
I don't know, it's, what, two years? Yeah, it's under construction now. These construction projects typically take 18 months, 18 to 24 months, so by the time we get it finished and the city operational in place, probably be a couple of years.
It'll be a couple of years. Would this report be done before that?
Oh, yes.
We hope it would be done the middle of next year.
Because what, what I was concerned about, and I think it was mentioned, that the meeting that we're facing this impending situation where we, we don't want the parking from the Glass House to impact the parking meters and the neighbors in the other areas. So it would be good if we had a plan before the Glass House parking came online, because they're going to charge for that. The theory was, if they charge for that parking, everybody's going to go on the street. If everybody goes on the street, then they're going to move to the neighborhood next door. And so it's important for us to control it, but, but you think it'll work, the timing is proper? Where we can have a plan of action before Glass House comes online, that was my concern.
Yes, our schedule for this RFP is, we should prob, we hope, have someone under contract in about three months, and then about three months after that, they would be done with their work. So if all goes well, they'll be done like the middle of next year. So then there would still be another year, a year and a half before the garage is open. And part of their work is to work on helping the city to set up parking meters in that surrounding area.
I think it's a little bit confusing, where it's talking about minimum compact sizes and unistall sizes, because that sounds, you don't have compact stalls if you have unistalls. So are they talking about, if we are to go with unistalls, they should be this size, and if we're going to go with allowing some percentage of compacts, it's going to be a different size? Is that what it's intended?
Well, one option that Charlie actually mentioned at the joint meeting was to give developers a choice. You can have such a percentage of compact sized spaces, or you can have unistalls of such and such a size. So we could give, get ideas of what sizes those might be, for either one.
That's good. I think also that if there's, I think one of the things that would be really, really useful in developing the long-term policy would be to have data on the use of the existing large park, parking structures. I mean, there's a number of them in the city, and I'm sure that the people operating those have a sense of how full they are, what their hours of use are, whether there's high times and low times and that. And I think that information would be really useful, and whether it's done with interviews with the operators of those different facilities, like Watergate, Emery Tech, Bay Street, The Marketplace. I know that at least some of the developers are very interested in talking with people about how their parking works, and I think that would be a good thing to add in.
I think the Spark Parking contract, of course, does not include that, because we would have to get the private property owners' permission to go in there and put the little, I don't, I didn't really explain how that works. I don't know how many of you saw that or heard about that, but there are these little transmitter things that look like little bots dots, as they're called, that they glue down to the pavement, and they can detect a big hunk of metal, as the, is the technical term, I think. And when there's a, a big mass of metal on top, then they transmit a signal to a central computer, and they can tell how long the car is parked there and so forth. So they'll put those down around on the streets and on the mound parking lot site, but they can't really put those in private garages. So we would have to rely on data collected by the property owners. And my sense is that those that have paid parking, or some kind of parking access gates, like Emery Tech and Watergate and Bay Street, probably have some kind of data that's associated with those parking machines. I think for someplace like Marketplace, where it's kind of a free-for-all, they may have a more difficult time providing us with some kind of data, but they may have something. We can ask them.
But I know that they've been studying it, they've been looking at restriping their lot.
Oh, yes.
To see how that works. So I think they're paying attention, and I think they would have some useful information, even if it's not absolutely accurate.
Yeah, that's more related to their lease requirements. But, yeah, they probably do have some data.
So if something, pursuing those available sources of information, I think. So, if something pursuing those available sources of information, I think would be useful to us in the long term.
That's a good comment.
As part of a background discussion?
Yeah.
For demand?
Yeah. Yeah, and talking about future unbundling or shared parking scenarios, I think that would be really useful.
Mm-hmm. So, how did this, uh, Gail's question on page three under action items for the consultant RFP, how did item two get resolved? Because right now it reads, "Adopt a larger compact space standard and unistall policy for not, new residential and non-residential projects." Those are, you can't, you can't have both. You either have a unistall policy or you, you, I mean, you, you got the compact stall even if it's a larger compact stall.
I thought there was, they were gonna leave it up to choice.
Is it and/or?
You could have both.
So, we're gonna-
But we're, we're basically, we're asking the consultant to consider these issues and give us advice on it.
Okay.
Uh, but as Diana said, you could have three different sized spaces. You could have compact size, you could have a standard size, and then you could have a unistall size that was between the two. And you could give the developer the option of having fifty percent compact and fifty percent standard, or all unistall, or something like that.
Okay. So, they're gonna provide information on the options and what it means?
Right.
Okay.
That's the idea.
Got it. Any other comments or input onto the RFP?
I like the flexibility of either or. I think that, you know, especially in, um, the existing buildings where you've got lot line, the lot line buildings where your, the space is real limited.
Uh-huh.
Probably might just make a, a project work if you have the option to do either or.
And then my understanding is that there, you're looking for a recommendation on the criteria under which we might waive parking requirements or reduce parking requirements. Is that, am I reading that correctly?
Right.
Mm-hmm.
How do you, uh, get a reluctant planning commission to, um, enforce in lieu fees? Is that part of the question there?
Yeah, right.
I, I'm, I'm a big fan of in-lu fees, but I don't know how many we've ever, uh, exacted here at the planning commission.
One thing that arose out of this, the joint meeting, was people were saying, well, it would be nice, this is, well, the developers were especially thinking, but I think some other people were thinking, it'd be nice to have some flexibility in the zoning ordinance so the planning commission at its discretion can say, "Well, on this project, we will, we're willing to reduce the parking without having to make variance findings." I mean, we do it now with variance findings, but it'd be nice not to.
Would, would that be like this thing we just looked at today where it has three parking places? We could say, "Okay, you only needed to have two, but you have to pay us some money."
Uh-huh.
Is that kind of what the result would be?
Well, in a little residential project like that, I'm not sure, but yeah, that's the idea.
On that scale.
Yeah, that's the idea.
Well, the question does come up of when do people get a variance or an exception or something, and when do they have to pay the in-lu fee? Um, I don't know, maybe we say if you, you could get a variance or an exception for ten percent of your parking requirement, but it, you'd have to pay a fee if it was more than that. I have no idea. That's maybe one idea how to deal with that question.
How do the developers feel about parking? Do they object to having, to provide as much as they do?
Well, actually, the big developers were saying that they like having a parking requirement because they don't want to be in a situation where they build the parking and then other people come and build smaller projects and don't build the parking and their customers park on the big lots.
Poaching, it's called.
They call it poaching.
At Oakland, it's one to one.
For residential.
For residential.
One space per unit, right.
Mm-hmm.
Any other?
Yeah.
Comments, questions? So, this consultant's gonna come back and have everything answered and we'll have all these options for-
It's gonna be perfect.
Thank you, Diana. Have fun.
Is that in two years, or, uh, what is the timeframe on this?
After the general plan's finished, right?
Well, you see the schedule in the back. There's no specific dates in it, but I think it says, it has months, doesn't it?
Yeah, it says six months from now. Ignacio was estimating three months once we get him under contract, and I figured three months to get him under contract.
February seventh.
So, this would probably include recommendations for changes to the zoning ordinance-
Oh.
That we could enact short-term. Okay.
And we're anticipating an award in, uh, February.
On what?
An award of the contract.
So, they can start then.
Right. That's, that's on the cover letter.
We get lots of awards.
Okay. Thanks, Diana. So, last item on the agenda is commissioner comments, and we have a request from Ignacio, um, regarding the economic development, housing development department for comments on the EPA Brownsville program grant application. And was someone gonna, I don't see Ignacio here, so-
Uh, no, I thought he would be here, but he's not.
You're gonna take it all in?
I, I'll, I'll do my best. Just fire away. I'm not really prepared to give you a summary of this memo, I'm afraid.
It seems like the, uh, we're pursuing less than we have in the past, looking at the site cleanup grant. You know, he always does a great job and I don't really have any specific comments on what, what's proposed here and what he's pursuing. Uh, it's work that needs to be done. The Sherwin-Williams, Baker Metal, and the Grainway Projects, and the Art Center site. So, it looks good to me.
Yeah, I, I think he's targeting the things that are ready to go and that he feels that we have a good chance of getting.
Yep.
I'm on the Brownfields Committee, so I heard that.
So, if you have ideas of other sites that should be on there, he'd be interested to hear them. I know he was asking me about that.
I tried to think of some, but I figured you guys know better.
Well, yeah, now they're, we've been doing a really fantastic job on cleaning up a lot of sites. And if there are other sites out there, because of our track record, we're pretty high up on the line to get funding. So, if there are sites that anyone's aware of, that an owner would be looking to clean up-
I'm just, um, I'm not sure why Baker Metals is there. That's a private property, but the council just alloc-
Sherwin-Williams.
Pardon?
Sherwin-Williams.
Right. The couns-, council just allocated funds for acquisition of the railroad property to the west of Sherwin-Williams, and it seems like that might be an appropriate target site. But I assume we don't, we're gonna have to go through a long process of the actual acquisition with the railroads before we could do anything there.
Jim, are these funds for public sites, not private?
No, they're, they're for both.
Not necessarily.
They're for both?
Right.
For both.
Actually, I think, Jim, that that's a really good suggestion and we'll pass it along to Ignacio. But I think that, I know we'll do some testing with that railroad acquisition, but it is moving forward.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we, there, I mean, there's been negotiation for some time, at least a year, if not more.
It is, but there is, at, at least, uh, there's a willingness and I think it's, it's moving forward.
Okay. Okay. Any other comments on this? Any other comments in general from the commission?
Yeah, I have a segue into, into that toxic thing anyway. The, the Department of, of toxics, um, met with Pana last week, two weeks ago.
Oh.
And they informed us that Sherwin-Williams is effectively closing down, starting, uh, they have started closing down. Their, their plant is operational in Nevada. They've been operating parallel for some time. And so, the neighbors have noticed a, a decrease in truck traffic around the site. So, we're soon to have an abandoned paint factory in the Park Avenue Neighborhood Association District and, uh-
Is it gonna be for sale?
What was what gonna be for sale?
Is it gonna be for sale?
Sherwin-Williams.
The site? Uh, I, I don't think that that will be determined until the, until the mitig-, the cleanup is done, until the feasibility study is completed and until the actual mitigation or the, the, the cleanup is actually done. Uh, and at that time, to see if anything, anything accrues to the title of the property.
Well, previously, when Sherwin-Williams had a development application on the site before they withdrew it, they intended to retain ownership.
Right. That, that's been their noise from day one, is that they-
That was that multi-story building, wasn't it?
They intended to go on the dirt forever.
It was a number of different projects, number of different buildings.
And then seller leased the, the air rights because they didn't want the liability, I assume.
So, they'd have the full responsibility for cleanup, is that right?
Oh, they always have had the full responsi-
And they can afford to do it.
Yeah. And the, and the cleanup orders has now fully transitioned from, um, the Regional Water Quality Control Board to DTSC. So, regional water is only, uh, another person at the table. DTSC is running it all now.
Any other comments?
In general?
I was gonna touch on Gail's comment earlier about applicants bringing pictures and, uh, kind of, uh, replicating, um, what the site might, what a site might look like with, uh, with the building built, after the building was built. I like that idea. I know in Oakland, if you submit an application, you've got to have pictures, uh, of every site. I think it's the twenty buildings closest. And, um, I think it just kind of makes this process a lot easier if, if they do that. And for us too, to have those pictures way ahead of time and have the polls out.
Yeah. Actually, I was gonna-
And then also, um, uh, having a requirement to contact and show that you've, uh, in good faith, tried to contact the neighbor well in advance to have a sit-down. Now, if they don't get back to you, at least you've got an email or a copy of a letter that shows that you tried to do that. And then we could not meet applicants like this over and over again and have these, kind of squash these problems ahead of time.
And I know that other jurisdictions do, can, put in conditions of approval regarding locations of windows in relationship to adjacent buildings. It's not out of line to do that.
Not at all.
I've never heard of it, but, uh-
Well, I, a couple of the broader things, um, that we've raised before, one is this, the scale issue. And we've asked, I'd like there to be an inch scale. It's one thing to say one inch equals a sixteenth of an inch that, of something that gets reduced. But unless you've got a scale shown on this map, it's, and can somehow read, I'm sorry, I need glasses now, read the reduction of a tiny width in there, it's really difficult for somebody to look at the map and understand what are we looking at?
Yeah.
Um, and I thought we had come to that agreement that every plan now was going to include-
A graphic scale.
Graphic scales, so it could be scaled off regardless of the reduction size. And, um-
Right.
I think previously with the, the story polls, the, the practice that the commission took, at least when there was a variance, I think in the last couple of years, if someone was requesting a variance, we've sort of pushed through the study session process, um, that they get polls out there. So, that especially in these infill areas, Stanford and Doyle with the, um, um, Levin Menzie project at Sunshine, they put story, story polls there. And I think there've been a couple others where polls have gone up.
You're talking about a height variance?
Yeah, the height variance. Um, we haven't required it, or even during study session, asked for it in, in these smaller infill projects. I'm not saying it would be a bad thing. It certainly would help the neighbors understand what's expected. The question is, you know, wha- what kind of burden do you place on an applicant for something that doesn't exceed variance or, you know, other setback standards? Um, but it certainly helped when he brought the photographs, even if it was sort of funky in-
Yeah.
Tonight's presentation. It, it helps as a reference. So, I, what, whatever we do, it would be nice to be consistent. And if we're going to have an expectation to do something by process, I think we should expect that to be done consistently and maybe set some standards around it. I don't know. I don't want somebody to, you have to go beyond a reasonable expectation.
I, I just want to point out two things, that this isn't on the agenda for an extended co-, um, conversation or discussion, but, um, that really wasn't my first point. My second point was, is that they-
It's a good point, though.
That the planning commission, uh, can always continue a project to have story polls put up if, if they think it's necessary to assist in, um, making a determination. So, um, a- and I understand that your point is you would like some guidelines, so you have that information coming into the meeting. But certainly if it's information that you feel would be helpful, then that's something you could request of an applicant, continue the hearing.
I guess we should have done it when we went through that prior study session, but, uh-
But it wasn't on this project. Maybe we should agendize this for the next meeting?
So?
Cause I, there are, you know, I'd like to talk about it some more, just about-
About when, do you put story polls?
Expect, no, not just story polls, but expectations about what we're gonna see on a plan.
I feel-
Scale, we can go back to these simple things.
I think we can do that, you know, since we are gonna be discussing, I know December agenda is really full.
Oh.
And we are gonna be discussing the council rules and procedures in January.
Okay.
And so, it would probably be a good-
Okay.
Companion piece with that, discussing what you would like to see.
Ben?
Yeah, I mean, we can put it off to February, even if it gets too crowded and there's nothing, uh, application that-
Okay.
It certainly would be better to have more complete plans. No que-, these are, I think, as rough a set of plans as we've ever seen.
Oh, no.
No.
Not my, well, yeah.
In my history.
I hope that they could have been there.
Worse.
So, any other comments?
Um, I'd just like to say that I also attended the California chapter of the APA conference.
Oh.
And I went to a number of really interesting workshops about street design, about walkability, about, uh, smart growth in streets, about infill project design. And it was really useful. There was a lot of good information there. And there's, the next year's conference is gonna be in San Jose, so it won't be such a trek.
Oh, good.
And it would be, um, there'll be a lot of good offerings there, I'm sure.
Maybe the commission can get down there next year.
Mm-hmm.
Cause that was really enjoyable last year when we went all into San Francisco.
In San Francisco, yeah.
You all went?
Oh, yeah, it was good.
Most, most of us.
I, I know it's kind of late. I noticed, uh, sorry, Gail, a typo in the action recap, September twenty-eighth. And it's just that my boss's name is not, uh, John McCapes. And even though I was recused from that, uh, he's, there is no John McCapes of Madison Park Financial. It's a little late.
Which recap is that?
September, it was the twenty-eighth.
Yeah.
Where, since I was recused, I kind of skipped it.
Which page?
But while we were sitting here, I noticed. Uh, page six on the bottom, last paragraph.
Oh, my goodness.
Hmm.
Okay, any other comments? Not seeing any. We will adjourn the meeting at two to eight, which is pretty good.